Right now, everyone's attention. We're gonna have a public meeting that's gonna be before our common council meeting. I'm calling the public meeting for additional appropriation to order now. So that'll be about ten, fifteen minutes before we start our regular common council agenda. Is there anything from the council on additional appropriation meeting that was called?
Additional appropriation, is that ordinance five? Well?
I'm checking.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Are you going to explain? Are you going to explain them?
The additional appropriations have been asked for from golf and from streets. I think last month's meeting, both of them were up there and it kind of explained to you what they would be asking for and why.
They did a good job.
Basically, at this point, I think golf is repairs for the year, gasoline for the year, and for golf carts. And the streets department needs a new roller.
Okay, thanks.
Really bad.
Okay, thank you. That's eighteen-five, eighteen-seven. Okay. Do you take public comments at this time for that? Does anybody have any comments or concerns about the appropriations for the golf course or for the street department? If you do, you can come up and speak. Gary. You have anything, Gary?
Uh, I don't think so. We got that named as, well, I couldn't quite hear, what was it named?
It is, um... Ordinance five. Ordinance number five, doesn't really have a, have a name. Are you talking about ordinance number?
Three.
It's irrigation and equipment.
I think, Gary, this is just the appropriation. You're talking about that.
Oh, okay, yes. No, the appropriation, what was it for five? And then eighty-five, eighty-five, and then five?
Yeah.
Yeah, total ninety-one, one fifty.
Eighty-five with some change, maybe?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five, one hundred and fifty?
And then the five?
Yes, it's ninety-one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. And I think the street department wasn't at eighteen thousand, nine hundred? Eighteen-seven. Eighteen-seven.
Eighteen-seven, yeah. Now, the streets department is coming out of their non-reverting fund, so that's money that's already in their fund, same as the irrigation. That's in Gary's non-reverting fund, so that's not coming out of the general fund there. The only thing Gary's asking to come out of Park General is the thirteen thousand for fuel.
Okay, yep. And then maybe my only question would be, is, if, do I need to come back and ask for appropriation for irrigation every time I need to use the irrigation money?
Yes, sir.
Good. Is it something I can do?
Not once it's appropriated. Once this money gets appropriated, then that five thousand will go into your line on your budget like normal, Gary.
Right, correct. And then if I don't spend that, I lose that?
It'll go into your general park fund, not exactly lose it, but it's not gonna revert back into the non-reverting fund.
And is that something I can come back and ask one time for an entire season to spend?
Well, if you run out of money and you need more out of your non-reverting, then we do another additional appropriation to.
But my, I guess my only concern is if I, you know, if I ask for five thousand now, you know, if I spend that and I need more.
You come back, you come back, yep.
I understand I gotta come back, but my only concern is I can't wait three weeks if I got a busted water line up there to go buy, you know, pipe.
That's a good point. We may have this stuff to die in.
You know, I can't, I kinda need that stuff.
You can't wait three weeks.
Daily at times, you know, I, I.
Right.
I don't wanna come and ask for, you know, thirty thousand of it, only spend ten and then, you know, kinda take that twenty back as a part.
How's the best way to?
So I didn't know, that was really, that's my only question. And if I have to come back, I guess, you know, and ask every month of month, uh...
But your main concern, Gary, is like the immediate, like not waiting for thirty days to come to some council.
Correct, 'cause I mean, it's nuts. I kinda gotta get my water fixed right away if something happens.
What have you done in the past, previous seasons?
I've never asked permission to spend money out of the non-reverting, or it was, I guess, never a non-reverting fund, just the irrigation fund. Which, when we made our purchases, like the new pump and the first purchases I made for sprinkler heads, uh, two years ago or so, that was, was it three years ago? They, I think they had actually, and Dustin right, I remember, they had put money that was actually in my budget for irrigation. And that was how we were able, 'cause I, I just used like, you know. There was a line, actually a line item in there that they must've got, you know, appropriated the year before to be part of the budget.
That's what, yeah, that's what we thought we'd try to do this coming next budget year, is to make sure you've got money in there at the start.
My next concern would be, or my next question, the money that goes into that.
Do you wanna come up here, Gary? Yeah, wait.
Sorry.
That's fine.
The money that goes into my irrigation fund, and Mr. West might be able to help me here, I guess, or Dustin. That is from every golfer that plays around the golf. I think when we had the increase last year, we raised it up to two dollars or so, every golfer that plays goes into that irrigation fund, they put two dollars in. And then every membership, it's like fifty dollars from the greens fees and the cart fees, I think, goes into this irrigation fund. So, I guess, you know, if we're gonna have to budget money, I, I feel like I, I'd earn, or we, we as the golfers, you know, they've put money into that account or that, that line item or that fund, uh...
What we would try to do is budget it from your general fund first, and then use your irrigation fund as a subsidy. Because you're gonna just about wipe it out pretty close when you buy these golf carts, correct?
Uh, I think there'll still be like seventy in there, won't there?
I think so.
I thought we had like a hundred and fifty-ish or a hundred and...
I thought it was just like, uh, about a hundred and twenty, and I was thinking the eighty-five was gonna take me down to about forty-two left or something.
Maybe, but, okay, okay, so the forty, I guess, whether it would be forty or seventy or twenty or whatever, I guess, and if I have to ask, that's what we gotta do.
It sounds like just for this, this rest of the season, it sounds like that's the way it's gonna have to be.
Sure.
Um, but in the future, I think if we can get the budget right and get it all appropriated right, then you won't have to do that next year.
And then when I do, I wouldn't want to ask for what's in there, the complete thing, right? 'Cause then if I don't spend it, I kinda lose it, which I don't think would be fair at that point.
Right, yeah.
And then maybe the next question is, did we ever start like the cart path fund?
That's what, that's on the agenda for tonight.
Okay, that's.
We're gonna, uh, we're gonna consider.
Okay, that's next.
We're gonna consider and approve that tonight, hopefully, and then we'll have that cart path fund set up for you.
Nope, then that's, that's really all for this time, the five and the, for the carts was all we was asking, I guess.
Okay.
Which was kind of all.
Great.
Yep.
Thanks, Gary.
Thanks, Dustin.
Fifteen minutes.
That's a long fifteen minutes.
It is a long fifteen minutes.
That's what they call an awkward silence.
This is definitely that.
Do we need to make a motion to vote on this?
What?
Do we need to make a motion to vote on it?
No, this is just like the public meeting for it, and then we'll actually do our part during the meeting.
Okay.
We're just, we're just gonna consider that tonight, not talk.
Okay.
I don't know if you can, unfortunately, I think this whole fifteen minutes has been designated to this appropriations for, just in case public has any comments and they have fifteen minutes to talk about it. But that would be a better probably use of our time. Thanks, Debbie.
The men are stick by slow, was your way to.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea.
Any jokes for us?
It's just gonna have to involve like more exact points, you know, but they've always just kinda spent, like, one to fix the irrigation. And now it's gonna have, they're gonna have to just kinda try to forecast it.
That's what she'll.
Yeah, 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 the whole time you're saying that, she's never been just taking, you know, non-reverting funds up from.
Creaking a little bit, huh? Are you playing the circus band? Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying, okay.
I'm stoked on it.
I'm stoked on her having circus this year.
And I think it's already too, Steve.
Sorry, my grandkids.
You don't realize how much you miss something and think you'll have it one year.
Not two in a row.
No.
Hey, my son's flying with a circus this year. And we're, I gotta show.
That's pretty cute. He's the, he's the cutest thing ever. She sends me videos of him sometimes and I'm like, oh.
Oh, my goodness.
That'll be fun. I got a few I should get to work on.
You said, "How do you ever say no to him?" She's like, "I do." I have to say no to him, he's so cute.
Just have to say no, but.
You can have whatever you want.
Hey, how long you been? I pulled him into her bed.
Okay, it's six fifteen, so. It's six fifteen, so I'd like to make a motion that we close, um, the public meeting.
Second.
Do we need to do a roll call?
Motion. My second. I know, but who motion?
I motion.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
Hey, Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Foco?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Fahed Ashini?
I am here.
Wolf?
Yes. Did you want to vote yes or no on closing the public meeting? It's not attendance.
There's voting yes or no on that.
Say yes, please.
Yeah, yes, it is.
He said, "I am here, and I just wanted to make sure we had your vote."
Okay, yes.
Okay, the public meeting is now closed. At this time, I'll call the pre-common council meeting to order on May third, twenty twenty-one, at six sixteen PM. If everybody would stand for the pledge of allegiance led by Pete, then remain standing for the invitation by Pastor Brett.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this evening. We ask your blessings upon this meeting. We ask for wisdom for all of those that are making decisions. We ask you to bless those that are mourning and heal those that are sick. We pray for your blessing and favor and protection upon our educators and our students. We pray that you bless the economy of this city. We thank you and we praise you when we ask all these things, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Do you see it? Roll call.
Anderson?
Here.
Guston?
Here.
Foco?
Here.
Ramsey?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
Fahed Ashini?
Yes, I'm here.
Wolf? Yes, here. Okay, does anybody want the minutes from the last month's meeting read, or does anybody have any corrections to the April fifth, uh, meeting minutes?
I'd like to amend that added.
Okay.
Um, last week, or last month, I asked about, um, the consideration about the golf carts. Was it the golf? Yeah, about twenty minutes and twenty-nine seconds, I asked for clarification because I felt like it was convoluted. And I'd just like that added to the record.
What and where?
I'd just like that I asked about clarification for the parks and golf situation.
Which part of the meeting did you ask that?
Um, about twenty minutes and twenty-nine seconds.
Those in any business? Bring Gary's finished presentation.
Yes. I asked for clarification and more information.
That's it, but you just asked a question?
Right, and asked for clarification, just.
Okay, does anybody else have any corrections? Under the minutes. I do. Okay. Under ordinance eleven, vacate is spelled wrong. I'm gonna fix. Other than that.
Got it, got it.
Perfect. Okay. Go ahead. I'll make a motion to amend the corrections.
Second.
Under the minutes, so roll call.
Second.
Okay.
I did.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Foco?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Fahed Ashini?
Yes.
And Wolf?
Yes. Okay, moving on to council liaison communications, does anybody have anything they'd like to report? I do.
Councilman Moore, I'd like to hear all of the communications from each council.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Uncle First? Yes, you go. All right, pre-unities board for April, the pre-unities board met on April seventh and the twenty-first. On April seventh, the board approved the payment of claims, approved dispersments for Grissom Water System improvements, and approved the hiring of an engineer to design and review construction of a chemical feed system to reduce phosphorus for the Grissom wastewater treatment plant. They also approved a dispersment for the pre-water upgrades to the Wabash River Main Crossing project. On April twenty-first, I was unable to attend the meeting due to sickness in the family. Um, the aviation board highlights, the aviation board met on April thirteenth at seven PM at the Prensile Airport. The financial report expenditures were twenty thousand, two hundred and forty-seven. All hangar rents are up to date, and he suggested they consider possible new projects for the year. The manager's report for the month of March, five hundred and thirty-three gallons of hundred low lead and eleven gallons of jet A fuel were sold. Um, the engineers report, the Prensile Airport is eligible for thirteen thousand in reimbursement for operation expenses from the American Rescue Plan Act. There was a presentation by Ron Fearnow about a PowerPoint presentation he is developing about the Prensile Airport. Um, the pre-planning commission, the meeting for April twenty-seventh was canceled because there wasn't anything to discuss. Um, the pre-civic center committee meeting, the meeting on April seventeenth was canceled because I had the stomach flu. We reschedule for May eighth.
Mark, do you have anything you'd like to report?
I got a few. Street department, I talked to them this morning about North Broadway, and they said the grant that they have applied for is not, they're not gonna be able to get it. So, they're looking for other ways to complete North Broadway, and it could be the only street that they are gonna be able to, to do this. So, it's gonna cost them like seven hundred thousand dollars to finish up North Broadway. So, that's the report there. Also, there's still four dogs at the animal control center, the same four that were there a month ago. So, he's kinda says, "I hope somebody'll come by and, uh, adopt them." Um, the, this month is mental health awareness month, and if you need any help about that, you go to the Ford County Council, and then we will provide for some help. Uh, the YMCA is to be completed on November eleventh and open up in, in December. And they are on schedule, 'cause I talked to Mark this afternoon, he said they're on schedule, so hopefully, nothing will get out of the area that, that will help there. And also, don't forget, May fifteenth on a Saturday morning, the extension of the Riverwalk Grand opened at nine o'clock, the ribbon cutting on May fifteenth on that particular moon, on Saturday, May fifteenth. That's all I have.
Who is it gonna be, uh, I mean, what parties?
The roundabout.
The roundabout?
The new roundabout.
What time did you say, Mark?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
Good.
I have a question, was, was the grant that they didn't get, is that for the community crossing grant, you know?
On North Broadway?
About North Broadway?
I think so.
Okay. One of the people that, and, uh, future girls in sustainability who are here and will be reporting, um, on the agenda as noticed. It's been, we've met twice in April, and it's the joy of my life. I mean, the past two years, these guys are just great and motivated and working together. It's just, it's delightful, and so, I'm really honored, Pete and I, to, to be able to, I'm honored, I know Pete is, but, I mean, it's, it's a joy. And we've got some phenomenal community members that, uh, they haven't been on many committees before, but they're just, anyway, I'm done bragging about them. Nikita, um, their meeting is Wednesday morning every, every month, and, uh, they, they've been allowing me to get some training for, uh, to learn how to understand, to understand economic development in Indiana much better, so I appreciate, but Brooke and Jen are, are helping me with that. Uh, ordinance committee, we've been working on a couple of ordinances. Tax abatement is not till June, is that correct, Brooke? So, yeah, there we go.
Steve, do you have anything to report?
The ordinance committee, we're working on a couple of changes, and I think we're gonna be talking about that as far as permitting for the city.
Pete, do you have anything?
I have nothing to add. Pat already mentioned the cancellation of the city center.
Okay. Tom, do you have anything you'd like to report?
Uh, we're gonna meet, Sam, we're gonna meet the eighth, not the eighth. We're going to have a meeting in May. We weren't going to have one for solid waste, but we are now because we have some things we have to discuss. That's the only thing I have.
Okay, great. The only thing I have is from Board of Works, um, they did hire a couple new policemen and also a couple new firemen. So, we're looking to try to get those departments up to full staff. All right, so that's it for communication from our liaisons. We'll go ahead and move to unfinished business, which there are none. And then we'll go to our first order of new business. Can I get a motion to consider ordinance number three, two thousand and twenty-one?
Second.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, this is an ordinance to establish a non-reverting cart path fund within the budget of the Prensile Golf Course. Susan, do you have anything you wanna talk about on that, or?
Let's do a roll call for two.
Oh, sorry.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Foco?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Fahed Ashini?
Yes.
And Wolf?
Yes.
The non-reverting golf fund, path, path fund, they thought it was non-reverting, and I went looking into the irrigation. We could not find anything that stated it was a non-reverting fund, and their funds have been going back at the end of the year reverting. So, this will keep that from happening, and that's what Gary was concerned about, to make sure this golf path fund got set up. There hasn't really been anything even deposited, not since, what, twenty seventeen, when we looked it up, so.
True. I don't know, I don't know what that, what, I don't know what that is. We didn't start this cart path fund until last year. Well, I hadn't thought we did. When we got the new carts, um, our cart pass up there, I mean, to be honest, they're embarrassing. Um, you know, we purchased the new carts, I figured, you know, we've got to do something, let's start this cart path fund. It was just like the irrigation fund where two dollars from every golfer went into this fund, so much from the memberships went into this fund, so we could start building this fund up. So, we could down the road, repair our cart. You know, we got these new carts, we don't really want them, I mean, they're gonna get beat up driving down our cart pass. That being said, you know, we use our cart pass on days like today. Other than that, they get off of them. I can't drag my equipment down them without beating up my bed knives and my rollers. So, it's just something I thought, you know, honestly, should've been started up years ago, but let's get on it now, so I, I don't. But the numbers, there should, you know, I, I was under the impression that last year, there was money going into this along with this year. And I don't know them off the top of my hand, I could get them from the clubhouse guy. He, uh, when he turns in his money received or whatever every day, you know, he's, he's breaking it down, how much he took out for cart path fund, how much he took out for irrigation fund, so I was under the impression there should be. Like I said, I can get a number, um, should be thousands.
So, where would that money have went? If they have it separated on their...
If they have it separated on there, where they have some for my good irrigation?
It would have went back in the general fund. This year, right now, he's got accumulated about $4,000, I think, so far this year. So we need to make sure it stays there from year to year to year.
Start building it up. Because we also felt like, you know, it was, we got to really build it up. It was more money bringing a company in to do something, like if you bring them in three, four, or five times, you're really, you know, let's try to only bring them in. The goal is maybe try to get, you know, if we can get nine done, build it back up, get nine done maybe, or even if we got to, you know, we got it, in my opinion, we've got to show the golfers, we are trying, because that was the whole thing, setting that up. We were selling it to the golfers, where, you know, your money's going back into the course. That's why we raised, which I think you guys are aware, we didn't have an increase up there for 11 years until last year. And we didn't, we didn't want to, you know, really raise it. I think it was 100 bucks for your memberships and your car storage and $3, $4 on your round. But the new cars justified that, and we were trying to, you know. Be awesome if we could get that set up.
This ordinance will keep you from losing your money.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Yeah, does anybody have any other questions or? Okay, can we get a motion to adopt ordinance number 3?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Dustin.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Falso.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Saad Ashini.
Yes.
And Wolf.
Yes. Okay, moving on to ordinance number 4, 2021. Can I get a motion to consider this ordinance?
So moved.
Can I get a second? Roll call.
Okay, Anderson.
Yes.
Dustin.
Yes.
Falso.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Saad Ashini.
Yes.
And Wolf.
Yes. So ordinance number 4, 2021, is an ordinance to amend ordinance number 16 from 1986. Do you want to discuss anything with that, Susan?
This is the original irrigation fund when it was set up, which would only allow him to spend money for the irrigation, period. Now they're wanting to buy golf carts out of it. So in order for them to use that money to buy the golf carts, we set this up amended, so it reads Golf Course Irrigation System Equipment and Capital Improvement Account.
So the equipment is the only thing that changed, is just adding that in?
You got the red line addition. All the red is the changes.
This ordinance also changes it from where the golf course reports to the Board of Works, actually to the golf course. Because at the time, the ordinance was originally established, there was no place for it at the time, so it's by default went to the Board of Works. Makes more sense that they, in practical standpoint, they answer the golf course board, so updating that as well.
Makes sense.
How do we get, well, I'll ask that later, communications.
So we don't have any other questions on that? Somebody can make a motion to.
How does this, last month, we got, we received some information about golf courts, golf carts. And apparently, Mr. Dowch found out while the mayor was sick, that we couldn't use it the way it was discussed.
That's what this is fixing.
It was discussed the last month.
Changing the voltage of the ordinance.
Right, right. Okay, so. How, where do we stand with the parks board now? I mean, how do we get new people to help this?
Pass this ordinance, and it falls under the Parks Board special plan?
What Kathleen is mentioning, and I'll just say it so everybody knows in the room, that because of all this and the confusion with the golf carts, we had three people from the Parks Department, Parks Board, I'm sorry, three people from the Parks Board resign. So caused some hard feelings, and so I think that's what you're talking about there. We lost Mr. Olson, we lost Tommy Beatty, and we also lost Brian Aggie, who had all been longtime Parks Department, or Parks Board members, that did a lot of work in the community, so.
And for clarification, Susan, that's why I asked for that amendment, for the amendments, because I asked for clarification, and I was pretty much shut down and not given more clarification. And then a week later, found out that there was a problem in Parks Board, were upset and resigned. So that's the only reason why I wanted the minutes amended, because I wanted more information.
And several resigned, and they kind of felt like they voted on that to buy the carts, they were told that they could buy the carts, and then they kind of found out later that, but through creative problem solving, he helped, and Susan, and worked out a way for us just to change this ordinance, so they could still purchase the carts that they wanted to get.
So do we have people on the Parks Board now?
No, not that I know of, but I think we're just down to two, so we don't even have a functioning Parks Board at this time. We have Allison Tall left and Ron Mullet left.
So?
So the mayor will have to appoint new people.
Okay.
So, but. Do we have any other discussion on this?
I don't, I'm done.
Okay, okay. I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 4, 2021.
Second.
Roll call. Mark seconded it.
Yes.
Dustin.
Yes.
Falso.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Saad Ashini.
Yes.
And Wolf.
Yes. Okay. This one, we only need a motion to consider, and this is additional appropriation ordinance number 5, 2021. Does anybody want to make a motion to consider this?
I make a motion to consider. Second.
Anderson.
Yes.
Dustin.
Yes.
Falso.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Saad Ashini.
Yes.
And Wolf.
Yes. So this is about the additional appropriations that we had the public meeting about for the first 15 minutes of the meeting. Somebody want to add anything? So we'll be bringing that back then next month to adopt, correct?
Right.
Excellent. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to City approved common council ordinance number 6, 2021. Can I get a motion to consider?
So moved.
Second.
Great, roll call.
Two seconds.
Kathleen.
Anderson.
Yes.
Dustin.
Yes.
Falso.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Saad Ashini.
Yes.
And Wolf.
Yes. Okay, so this is an ordinance adding the American Rescue Plan Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. So this ordinance is basically setting up a fund so that we can receive the money that we've been given through the American Rescue Plan.
Does it work, I think Dustin, I asked Dustin, but it works where, when you see the first, by doing this, we can receive the first half? Is that correct?
I don't know how the ARP is going to be divided up from the government, so the ARP, the American Rescue.
American Rescue Plan.
Yeah. Yes. Sorry. And how it's ultimately distributed, I don't know. That's all, that's all, I'll leave it there.
Okay. Two payments. First payment will be as soon as the state gets, 30 days after the state receives it, we'll receive it, and then a year later from that date, we'll get the second half.
Perfect. Thank you.
We have until December 31st of 2024 to spend it.
All right. Great, that's much better than, perfect.
The American Rescue Plan should not be confused with the CARES Act, completely separate.
Yeah, this is federal money.
All right, if we don't have anything else to discuss, entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 6, 2021.
I move that we adopt the ordinance. Second.
Mark and Steve.
Uh, Pete and Steve.
Oh, Pete. Anderson.
Yes.
Dustin.
Yes.
Falso.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Saad Ashini.
Yes.
And Wolf.
Yes. Okay, moving on to our last ordinance, ordinance number 7, 2021. Can we get, can I get a motion to consider?
So moved.
Second.
This is an ordinance to establish an internal control policy for the American Rescue Plan Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. So in order to receive this money, we have to have like a plan in place that we have controls set up, so this is what Susan put together.
Roll call.
Oh, sorry, roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Dustin.
Yes.
Falso.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Saad Ashini.
Yes.
And Wolf.
Yes.
Along with the plan there, they have, this one has to have its own internal control written for it.
Somebody have any questions about this ordinance? Anyone have any questions? Entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 7.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Dustin.
Yes.
Falso.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Saad Ashini.
Yes.
And Wolf.
Yes. Okay, next on the agenda, we have Assistant Chief Matt Feller here on behalf of the Prew Police Department to present some information regarding a USDA grant to purchase police vehicles.
So we are, at the police department, we are working on another grant through the United States Department of Agriculture. Last year, it was a museum that we presented to you guys. It's just really to inform the council of what our intentions are, but we're also required by the federal government to publicly notify you, as well as to offer to anybody on the council or anybody in the public, if anyone has any questions. This is a grant that is a matching grant. This would be, if we're successfully obtaining this grant, it'll be the third time that we've obtained this grant. We were able to purchase a couple of police cars last year with it. Our hope is to purchase two more. They match, I believe it's a 55% to 45%, so 55% coming, of the funds coming from the federal government, 45% coming to us, or from us, and the cap from the federal government is $50,000. So our current budget is $98,000 for two fully, completely equipped police vehicles. And the federal government, if we're successful, will provide $50,000 of that budget to us. So I will entertain any questions you may have, or anyone from the audience, if anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
How many vehicles do we have right now?
Have to defer to the chief of police, who I do not see around me.
Okay, how many officers do we have right now?
I believe that we are at 20, I believe, with the two who were sworn in this morning.
Okay.
I, I'm sorry, I've lost count of how many openings we have and how many we don't have. I know that we're budgeted for 28, and we are still, we are still interviewing folks as late as today, the pension board met, and then I would imagine, depending on how that process goes, I'm not for certain how many candidates we have left, but there's a possibility that we'll be starting again with another process to try to find people to add to the department.
Here's Chief.
How many vehicles do you guys have right now?
Come up to the front, please.
I believe 30 vehicles right now.
30?
And it could be less. I'd have to go count them all up.
Okay.
Because we're right in the middle of trading and.
And how many officers? 23, sorry.
Hell, yeah.
23?
Counting today. Five, I believe.
What kind of, what condition are your current vehicles in? When did you get new ones last?
We got new ones last year.
Two of them, correct?
Three, I believe.
So when did you get new vehicles before that? I just tried to.
We've been getting them every year.
Okay, okay.
Some years, we don't get any. Some years, we do. We fell behind. But we've been getting two through the grant, and then the city bought, I believe, two last year, the year before, might have been three. We've been just trying to replace the Crown Vics that are all falling into disrepair. The maintenance on them is, they're usually broke more when we drive them. If we go grab one of the pool cars, which are the Crown Vics, it generally won't make it a day or two, and then it's at the shop being fixed. They're just, they're old, I mean. The wiring's failing on them, water leaks, paint's coming off, a bunch of them we just got rid of, where they were actually black, white, and gray. They're rusted out, I mean, they're just, their times came. Even our newer ones are up around 90,000, our first Taurus's, which replaced the Crown Vics.
How many Crown Vics do you have now?
I believe five.
Five?
And we'll probably end up still using two of them for at least another year, and two of them will be pool cars. So it just takes a while to cycle them out, which will mean the Taurus's will be over 100 by the time it comes time to replace them, and we get zero trade-in, and we've rode them all the way to the bottom. The dealerships only give us $500 apiece for the Crown Vics. The last two ended up going to the scrapyard, because one had a blown head gasket, the other one had no power steering, no air conditioning, and no white paint left. And it just wasn't worth spending any money on.
Assistant Chief Feller and Chief Silviana, are you creating a plan where we can help you maybe recover?
Well, we used to replace them with deferral money.
Okay.
But the deferral money doesn't generate, since the state's changed on all that, it's all done. It doesn't generate enough where, before the COVID, we hoped we could replace one car a year, deferral money, but it didn't generate very much money last year. So, you know, we don't have very many options to generate money. In a police department, it's either grants or the city, and there's not a lot of grants out there, other than this one grant we found, which is kind of a matching grant, $50,000. But that's about what we're paying per vehicle, because we got no trades. The last car we traded, we traded because we thought, and it was 2012, it was about 80,000, but we hadn't spent any money on it, and we had a twin to it that we traded that the motor was ready to blow up on. It had more maintenance issues than we cared to spend on it, and that's how that one was going to be after it's been sitting. But to be honest, the Crown Vic would probably be cheaper to run than what that Charger was going to be a heap, is why we got rid of it, why we still got something out of it to trade. It's lowered the cost of vehicle we're buying this year.
Thank you. Just really concerned about your officers and how we can help you better.
Since we've been short, all the Crown Vics and older cars have been sitting, which bought us a little time, because we put all the better vehicles on the road. But now that we're hiring people, they're going to start going back on the road, which is going to start enduring lots of maintenance again to keep them moving.
So, let's see, to answer your question, since I'm not happy to introduce you, I look through. So, we have thirty-one cars in our.
Thirty-one, okay.
Keep in mind, we have thirty-one cars in our fleet. There are pool cars, new cars break down, especially, we have a separate car that was a K-nine pool car, so if, you know, one of our K-nine cars went down, there was a car that heated and actually, unfortunately, you can't just throw one of those dogs in backseat of your car like we can, like old retriever, because they'll probably eat something in the other side. So, and, and at the time, you know, up until last year, we was budgeted between nine officers. So, that really would have only left us with, with two extras.
Okay.
So, of your thirty-one police vehicles that we have in our fleet right now, five of them are older than ten years old.
Okay.
And thirteen of the vehicles that we have are between the ages of six and ten years old. I don't have the breakdown in front of me to tell you exactly what, you know, what brand and, and model of vehicles that we have, how many Crown Vics do we have. Our, our fleet is aging, and so these are obviously necessary replacements that we have to get to our heads. And then what you think about, as, I know that you guys have chatted before, as we're trying to recruit folks to come here, that's one of the things that they look at. If I were to have offered you a Pinto to come to Peru PD versus a Corvette to go to another department, they're probably going to choose the Corvette over the Pinto in time. So, we, to a certain degree, not for safety purposes, but, you know, this is part of recruiting, we have to do to try to get, get folks to come.
Right, I knew that was part of your advertisement, to try to get officers, is that you're letting them drive their vehicles, right?
Right.
Like around them, that's like an incentive, so. So, you think you can get two explorers with this, or three?
We're hoping.
Okay, two explorers, okay.
The way that the budgeting is, is for this program, and we're kind of behind the eight, I wouldn't say we're behind the eight, well, we're in crunch time, this budget, this grant is due within this week, so.
Okay.
We will be working with the mayor and with the president of this week to get all our paperwork signed and sent off. So, we, we will have, it is a relatively quick turnaround time as to whether we've gotten this funding or not, and then we, we won't actually have a funding for it until October first, because this week here, if the federal government operates, so.
Okay.
Once that happens, if we're approved, we intend to move pretty quickly to get these vehicles through.
Right, you'll let us know if you get it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thanks for your hard work doing this.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody, thanks, folks, anybody in the audience have any questions?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I think I read, and I think you mentioned it briefly, but this is a grant from the USDA. I can't correlate.
So, they have a special division within the USDA that is part of rural development. And our, the size of our city, well, you know, from Miami County, Peru is a pretty large place, but collectively across the state of Indiana, especially across the country, we're a relatively small area and designated by the federal government as being a rural area. So, it falls under their purview somehow, some way, as kind of wonky as it sounds, that it's Department of Agriculture, we are a rural area, so this is part of that rural development.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Matt.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the Future Growth and Sustainability of Peru Committee reporting on some events by committee members. Is there anybody in particular that wants to go first?
Brooke, you want to start out? Please?
It's called that. Sure. I'll start out, just because small business, May is Small Business Month, and today through May eighth, um, actually, May ninth is Small Business Week. And this morning, the mayor signed our proclamation for Small Business Week. Not going to stand here and read it all. There's a lot of big words in there, wasn't there, Mayor?
Yes, you were.
Not going to go through that. But we have a new group, a small business group, that met twice in August, first August, April, sorry. The first meeting was to discuss events for the month of May for Small Business Month. And they, it was a great group. We had about thirty people show up, and we met at Smitty's for lunch. Like I said, about thirty people, people that have never been to any other call-out meetings before. It was really good to see people get involved and have an interest. So, we talked about some events, and then we met again Friday, April thirtieth, just last Friday. And again, I think we had twenty-six people there, get another great group for a lunch meeting, and again, some, about five or six different people that showed up. And some of the events we talked about that are going to be happening, second Saturday, we're focusing on two events this month. The first one is second Saturday, which is May eighth. Rediscover downtown Peru is kicking off second Saturdays for the season in May. So, it is their kickoff. There's a fashion show in the afternoon at the Artesian Gallery. There's a mystery dinner at the Manicore. There's Kids Corner at Fifth Street next to the museum, and there'll be a band on the courthouse steps. Also, from two to four, at the McClellan Winery Toll House, there'll be pictures with Mom, and it'll be on, at their big building on the front porch with a setup so you can go take pictures, and that's free. So, the other event we are discussing or promoting is the trail opening that Mark mentioned. That is Saturday, May fifteenth. The Kiwanis is also sponsoring a family fun walk that day. It's a two-mile fun walk, like I said. It starts at the roundabout. We'll go all the way on the new part of the trail, and I did get confirmation today, the whole thing will be paved and ready to go by then. There is a section of it right now that's not complete due to winter. It will be done next, end of this week, beginning of next week. But it'll go to the Nickel Plate Bridge and then come back, so it's a two-mile walk. The ribbon cutting will kick off that walk at nine AM. The mayor will be there cutting the ribbon with our big gold scissors. And of course, we invite all of city council to be there for that project. The last thing we have is something to kind of kick off summer, and that would be on May twenty-eighth, Friday, May twenty-eighth. There's a group planning a community cruise-in with sidewalk sales, and again, it's a Friday, so it's going to be kind of an all-day event. Sidewalk sales during the day, grab-and-go food and drinks in the downtown, and then a cruise-in at night and ice cream. So, that's kind of what we have going on for Small Business Networking. And our next meeting for the Small Business Networking, I don't remember the date, but it's the third, I think it's the twenty-first, I think, the third.
Twenty-first.
The third Friday in May. They're going to start meeting the third Friday every month, so.
Brooke, for those of you who don't know, Brooke Makita has been the supporter of this, and you've conducted beautifully and just get through things, but I want to thank you, for Makita, for sponsoring the mail, picking up the mail tab and.
I'm thrilled with it. I'm thrilled with the turnout and the people that have been showing up. They contact me in between meetings with ideas, and can I do this, can I do that? So, it's just really good to see the small business owners really getting involved, so.
Thank you, Brooke.
Say, Donna and Tammy, do you guys want to, please? And then after that, it'll be Patrick and Samantha, and then Carl, can you go last, please? I'm going to see anybody. So, I'm here, isn't it?
Okay, I'm going to read this. Hello, my name is Donna Hines, and I, along with Tammy Gamble, were asked to join a group called the Future Growth and Sustainability of Peru, Indiana. Tammy and I are working on the Social Progress and Equitable Justice Subcommittee. In some of our discovery process, we found some valuable information that I'd like to share with the council. Our first idea was to have a sidewalk installed on Bobtail Pike, because so many residents walked that area when going to town. Tammy discovered, while driving Bobtail Pike, sidewalks were not plausible and not safe. And while Tammy was gathering her information, I also discovered, and this is really interesting, eighty-eight families live at Arrowhead Estates, and less than half of them have automobiles. That number was striking to me, so I called Bobtail Woods, and at least six or seven families have no automobiles. Since sidewalks are not possible or safe, Tammy came up with the idea of small buses running east and west and north and south to help these residents getting safely to their destinations. Our goal is to make this type of transportation safe, maybe free, and handicapped accessible for the entire city. Yes, we have the transportation system from the Y, but some residents simply can't afford even that small amount, and oftentimes, there's scheduling issues. So, right now, Tammy and I are in the discovery and information gathering process, working on the details that would bring this idea to fruition. Thank you.
Any questions?
So, they will be city-funded?
Pardon me?
They will be city-funded?
Probably grant.
Grant?
We're going to be working on a grant, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Great job.
Oh, go ahead, Lynn.
On that transportation deal, there, there are, the federal government sends money to the state every year, and each municipality can apply for that, and the number of municipalities that apply determines what percentage of everybody gets. But there's money at the state level every year to go towards public transportation.
Well, and I know Cookmo, Wabash, and Lubensport all have public transportation. I don't know about as far as Tees, I do not got that far into it yet, but still, as she said, looking at the other aspects of it, because that's a pretty big, pretty big venture.
It is.
The YMCA gets part of that money from that.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
Great. Patrick, you're up.
Hello, hope I'm not too tall for this line. My name is Patrick Redman, I think I know most of the council here, everybody, in fact, so, thank you for hosting. And I'm really excited to be here. I would just like to say, before I kind of fill you in on what we've been doing with the Art Advocacy Committee, under the head of Marlene Compton of the Miami County Artisan Gallery, I'm super excited. This is like the most excited I've been to live in Peru in my whole life. I've always loved Peru, but thank you all for being interested in our ideas, and I'm so happy to be like part of all these wonderful Mayans that are in the audience and that have been to our committee and things like that. And I think it's great, I've actually been wanting to come to a council meeting for about two years, and here I am. And thank you to, yeah, thank you, thank you to Kathleen for like, you know, helping, inviting me to come and others as well, and finally, I'm here. So, we've been talking, we've had two committee meetings, sorry, one with the Art Advocacy Committee, and then one with the larger committee, the, is it Future Growth and Sustainability of Peru? And we have an idea to have a large art event, and some names that have been thrown around, Art Walk, Art Fair, Art Carnival, all kinds of different things. But basically, an art walk similar to what other cities do. Michigan, many cities in Michigan, it's like a huge draw. I've participated in art contests there where they involve local businesses to display art. Bloomington, Indiana, more local, Wabash have streets lined with art for art festivals and things like that. And of course, once you get it going, they're huge draws, because you get artists from other communities, you get their fan base from other communities, and then it also highlights Peru's art. And there are so many, literally hundreds of people that have come into the gallery where I have my own art studio and talked to Marlene Compton about their art and wanting to display art and wanting opportunities to show art and do art and get involved with the art. And they, we've had youth camps where the youth want to be involved with art. And so, we're still on the brainstorming stage on this, but we have a lot of ideas, and it involves the schools, all three schools participating. It involves other organizations like the Plain Air Organization out of Converse, Indiana, led by Avon Waters, and other organizations, and frankly, any art organization who would want to be involved and has someone passionate enough to invest the time to become part of our idea we're looking for. And so, basically, right now, we're just seeking support for this idea and seeking ideas for the idea in general. But, you know, it, it could be pretty big, and I'm willing to invest a large deal of my time and energy into it, as is Marlene Compton, as coordinators, if possible. And she already has a group of people for her subcommittee that also have invested time and at least meeting and coming up with ideas. And I'm really excited to see like all these small ideas just become bigger. So, I just wanted to fill you guys in on what we're kind of thinking about and ask anyone who's interested to come talk to us, and if you have ideas for how we can speed along the process of planning. I was just talking to Kathleen today about talking to the Board of Works, and how do we get food permits, and how do we know what streets we can use and what streets we can't use, and all that kind of thing. So, I'd be happy for any ideas. Never planned a event that large, but I'm looking forward to working with people, and I've been part of some, but just not the planner. So, anyway, new experience for me.
I think that, that you would be great to work with them at the Civic Center, if the possibility there, yeah.
Okay, awesome.
I thought about having art shows there.
Okay, yeah, that'd be awesome.
That's a possibility we've been tossing around.
Awesome. One of our goals is to highlight Peru art, including the galleries we have in town, kind of with an art walk. And I think we tried an idea like that during the Cole Porter Festival last year perhaps, and there wasn't a lot of participation with it, but I think we could do a good job with incorporating it into an overall art event, not so much a different themed event. I think there's just so much art to be appreciated in Peru, it's hard to even fathom. The collection at PCS, and then the new art that's coming out of there every year with the seniors, and if the Civic Center has art or wants to display art, that'd be awesome, as well as the two galleries in town. There's also a collection at Grissom, and so we're talking about the possibility of involving them as well.
Maybe you could have like a, a trail to go from one place to another.
That's an idea we've thrown around, we would love to do that. We'd particularly love it if we could get transportation, whether it's through the YMCA or through a private company. We had the idea of the Horse-Drawn Carrot as like a novelty transportation around town, and, but also perhaps a, a larger practical.
Or the circus wagon.
Buses and things like that.
A circus wagon.
A circus, yeah, that would be awesome. And in fact, the Circus Hall fam probably could, you know, maybe help out there. They have circus art to show, so. Okay, well, thank you all for your interest, and thank you for allowing me to participate today. It's great, I love it.
Thank you.
Sounds great, Patrick.
Thanks, Patrick.
Thanks, Patrick.
You're up, Samantha. Leland, did you want to come up with her and share some ideas?
I don't have anything prepared.
Bring it.
Yeah, did we have it prepared?
You don't want an answer to that.
You were in on a recent conversation. Do you mind if he comes up with this, Samantha?
Oh, not at all, not at all. More the merrier.
Want to introduce yourself?
I'm Leland Brown. I'm a local policeman.
And I am Samantha St. John. I'm the Director of the Miami County Recycling District, and I am part of the Environmental Responsibility Section of the Committee. When we started, at our very first big committee meeting, I began working with Patrick on several ideas for a project of some kind and other ideas that could help us be successful all the way around. The project that we think is a good place to start is a Wabash River Cleanup. I added Nick Parkman from Peru Utilities after speaking with him about the project. He was very interested, and after that, I approached a few other people who are interested in environmental sustainability, and Leland joined us. I was very happy. He gave us some great ideas in our last meeting. We've had several meetings to brainstorm. I was just sitting there trying to figure out, I think, I know we've had at least three, and some emails and phone calls and things, and there's a lot of ideas and a lot of possibilities. Our group goal, one of them, is to educate the public and to break the misconception that the Wabash River is a dirty river. There's a lot that plays into that. It is, it's, it is a fine and clean river. As Nick will tell you, they test it on a very, very regular basis. The reason it doesn't look like a big mountain stream is because there's not a big mountain beside it. Our soil is different, the river, sorry, the river bottom is different soil than what you would find up in the mountains, and so our river just doesn't look that way, but it is indeed clean. So, there's some water quality education and also some local land and possibly some soil education also. I have arranged to have speakers for both our meetings, our little subcommittee meeting and also the big Future Growth meeting, from the Wabash River Defenders Group, and they are from Wabash County. They shared with us their experiences and how their group started from just some local volunteers to past events, and they have had as many as four hundred local volunteers all joining in, and they've been able to go from Huntington County line to Miami County line. They've just had enough people.
Samantha, we just, we kind of, I need to hurry up a little bit.
Okay.
No, just because we could talk a lot about this. Could you, I mean, could you, you two talk about? two talk about the planned event that?
Yeah, it's next.
Okay, I apologize.
Yeah, it's next.
I just know what I'm swarming here. I don't want to.
Yeah. They explained their team system with team leaders to help gather the volunteers. I thought that was a good idea. Everybody else seemed to think so. And they discussed creating a presence in the community and also with talking to everybody and every person that you come in contact with. And our original idea was to plan an event this year. This was one of Leland's good ideas, to slow it down just a little bit.
What's the event?
And what we were going to do instead is to get some good experience under our belts this year. Our group, as many up as is possible, are going to go to Wabash's River Cleanup. It's on July 31st. And we're going to see how they operate there. And then, in October, when Nick has his through Peru Utilities, we're going to all go to that one and help support Nick also. And we're going to see how he runs things. And then, our hope is to, as far as running them, put it together with a nice mix of the two. And we would also want to take a picture of everything that's collected, of the one in October that came out of our area and say, this is what, that's what Leland came up with to, if you want to tell them now that you can.
Get to the mic, please.
Part of the reason I wanted to come into this committee was that it, I think it's going to be a good PR thing for the city as well. This could be, end up being a, kind of a big annual or biannual event. Because Nick has been doing this sort of thing for years with the Utility Department. He says, Mr. Parkman, right?
Right.
Yeah. And, but I hadn't, as an individual, I hadn't heard of it. So, one of the things I hope we increase with this is, let the PR, get the word out. It's a citywide thing. It's not just the Utilities Department kind of doing their part of cleaning up theirs. It's, it's the whole city's getting together, you know, uniting arms and getting out and cleaning up our river. So, that's, that's a big, that's the Wabash River. That's Indiana's river. That's a big point of pride. It should be a huge point of pride for our town. So, yeah, and like she was saying, we're, these, these excursions to Wabash, that's good reconnaissance. So, we know kind of what to expect. And we don't need to, we don't need to reinvent what Nick did. We just need to go in and make his event bigger with our own numbers. And then, we can, and in April, he has another one planned for next April, we can see if we can, like, double or triple it then too, you know, just thinking a citywide event. It's something that we kind of need because of, because honestly, the appearance of the river doesn't live up to what it should. And we can, we can help fix it. And it'll really make people want to live here instead of driving through here and saying, there's nothing good to see. It's one of our main problems that I've seen.
How many times you want to do this in a year?
Well, Nick's been doing it twice a year, April and October. Last year was an off-year because of the pandemic. But I don't know, I don't know if we've planned on that.
We haven't. We're still working on plans. Depending on how many groups of volunteers we get, if there's more than enough to do the whole city limits, then we're going to start sending them out, you know, a mile past the city limits or a mile, you know, east and a mile east, or, you know, a mile west from the city limits. And eventually, we would love to be able to have enough volunteers to do, just like Wabash has done, and do county line to county line. And we're thinking that we do the PR, we do the notifications, we get out there and do a lot of talking ourselves. We can get some people interested. And then, we'll have more people interested because we'll hold a bunch of, bunches of stuff out of, out of the river and off of the banks and then more people and more people. And I would love for it to be as big as Wabash's group. I really would. And that's what I'm going to try to do is just promote, 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 promote. Start within the city and then, like I said, just branch out as we get more teams.
I know in the past, they've had Cub Scouts or Boy Scouts help them out, but they only did one section.
Right.
I believe there is a couple of the, the Boy Scouts. I think Nick already, he always has them. So, he'll be there as far as I know.
Have you gone to any of the Utility Board meetings? They are open to the public.
Honestly, no, I haven't.
I am on the liaison. And it would be a good thing to go ahead and kind of talk to the Utility Board. They meet the first and third Wednesdays at 4:00 PM at the Utilities.
Okay.
So, if you would want to, I can meet you outside and help you.
That would be wonderful.
Okay. So, whenever, I can give you my card and you can call me if you're going to come. And I'll, I'll make sure I wait for you.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
As far as the frequency, you're asking how many times we're planning. I believe I think the initial idea was one big event like Wabash has, theirs in the middle of the year, it's a big event. Nick has been doing it twice a year. And I didn't personally understand why he was doing it. I, but when, when we spoke to him, it all comes clear. He does it twice a year for seasonal issues and it all just, it makes everything easier. So, twice a year in the fall and then spring makes a lot of sense to me now. So, but you never know. If it gets really big, we might just have a great big one.
So, you guys could combine with Nick and do it in fall and then have his expertise as a helping guy.
Right. That's what we planned for this year.
That'd be great.
Yeah, to combine with his and learn from him.
Okay. So, I'll give it one, I don't have my cards with me. I'll give you my phone number.
Okay. I've got some with me and I can talk to you afterwards.
Okay.
Thank you guys very much. Sounds like a great, great plan.
I have one question for you guys. It doesn't have anything to do with the River Cleanup, but it does have to do with the environment and sustainability. Do they have an electric car charging place in this town?
I answered that for you.
Did you have one?
Not yet. They're working on it. The Utilities Board is working on it.
Great. Because I was driving to work today and I heard this amazing story. It happened in Colorado where this small town got an electric car charger in this distillery and how like it's changed everything for their town economically. So, and actually, the guy that runs the distillery is now the mayor because he's made the town so successful. So, so, yeah, so I just, off topic, but I didn't know. Maybe that's something we could look into too.
Yeah, they're working on it.
Awesome.
They've got the East Minute Casey's appropriated. So, in fact, there's supposedly grants and is part of the new infrastructure deal that's being proposed to get so many chargers, electric chargers out throughout the country. So, maybe that's something we could tap into as well.
Oh, definitely. Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And you guys are all welcome to join us on any.
I was wondering, when do the subcommittees meet?
That's the main committee, but I gave you the, the next day is the 10th.
April 10th.
At the Artisan Gallery.
Or Gary Payton.
Yeah, at 6:30. And it's open to the public because it's a city council meeting. And then, each division takes like a subgroup and meets on their own and.
Okay.
They see all the information.
Okay, cool.
Sorry, I'm getting over a little bit of a cold or something. I'm the Director of the Cole Porter Festival. My name is Carl Rose Now. I also work with the Chris Kendall Mart. And, well, as, as far as the Cole Porter Festival goes, we have four that we've added, four new events that we've added. And one of them is Cole's Roaring 20s. There's the Songwriting Workshop, which is pretty exciting because it's for like pros and beginners alike. Then we have a Cole's Cover Tune Contest, which features, Dr. Redman, who's going to be performing at the event, among other people. And then, excuse me. I'm sorry. Okay, so, the Love Linda, I don't know if you saw it in the paper or not, but it's directed by two-time Tony Award-winning Richard Maltzby Jr. And it stars Stevie Holland. And what it is, it's going to be like off-Broadway on-demand premiere. Well, it premieres on Cole Porter's birthday, but we're going to be at the heels of the, you know, the premiere event. And it's going to take place at the Riverview Event Center, which is pretty exciting in itself. And I like to encourage, you know, city council members to come out to the events and what have you. And then, Brooke was up here and we talked, well, me and Kathleen talked about it, but there was, I met with SCCA group out of Indianapolis, and that was on Sunday. And the President, I believe, his name is James Apuzzo, and he was interested in getting the Peru Police Department involved next week, if that's a possibility for Saturday, to come out and do like SCCA event for like, you know, bragging rights and whatnot. And they said you can film out there and, you know, might be something fun for the community to do. And I guess we'll meet for more on that later as it comes, but I figured it would be important information to, you know, suggest now since we're all here.
And Brooke, and Brooke, you're on top of that, kind of?
Sure, yes.
You and Carl will communicate anyway.
And if anybody who doesn't know what SCCA is, it's like a sports compact car club of America, Sports Car Club of America. Sorry, it's my fault. And then, so, and he, he also made mention of the Fire Department too, if they wanted to get involved in that, which I, I don't know what that all would entail. But we have a fashion show that's happening at the Miami County Artisan Gallery. And it'll be played on a Steinway grand piano that we had donated from a guy in, close to Detroit, Michigan and whatnot. And, let's see what else is there. And then, May the 8th, we have an event called 19th Amendment Here We Come. And it's about the 19th Amendment, of course, but suffragettes and like all the stuff that they would have had to endure back in those times to get the right to vote. And I think, you know, encourage everybody to come out to that as well. Does you have any questions for me?
At the Manicore, right?
What was that?
It's at the Manicore, right?
Yeah, it's at the Manicore. Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Is that it?
Yeah, they're just working really hard to bring some positivity to our community, so.
Yeah, sounds great. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to communications. Debbie, did you want to go first in communication?
Well, I'll start out with two things that I have. First thing I want to say is I'm Debbie Wallach. I'm, I think it's on you. So, I'm Debbie Wallach, the Executive Director of the United Way. And I just want to thank you for letting me come and speak to the council. So, first of all, I want to thank the City Council. I want to thank the mayor. And I want to thank Susan for the grant that we just was awarded. And it was a pass-through grant from the Community of Office State Affairs. We received a $1,000 grant. And so, thank you so much for being the pass-through for that. So, that is a childcare service grant that we were awarded. And so, thank you so much for letting us participate and partner with you.
It was a hundred.
A hundred thousand.
You said one thousand.
I'm sorry, I said thousand.
I want you to get credit for all your work.
A hundred thousand dollar grant, I'm sorry. And so, the way that that'll work is the grant will be awarded and it'll go to Susan. And Susan will write, write the grant to us. And then, we will administrate that grant. And that will go to three of the providers here in the community. And those were some of the ones that helped with that matching grant. So, I will administrate the grant and I will do all the granting for that. And then, we will send everything back to Susan. So, that way, that will go out and be fruition, that will be, go out and we will make sure that all that comes to fruition. So, we just again, want to thank you so much for being that partnership for us, being that pass-through so that will come. So, the city, we can use that. And the goal is to make sure that 20 more additional families can have childcare. We hope that it'll be more than 20, but it's for low and moderate families. That's our goal we want to reach. So, again, thank you from the United Way. We also want to thank Stephen Ray for helping us write that grant and making sure that we can help all these families. So, Susan, thank you so much for helping us with that. We couldn't have done it without you. And Mayor, again, thank you for everything that you did to help that come to fruition.
No problem.
So, are there any questions about that grant, how that all came about? You know, I know we came to you twice and you guys really helped us. And we really appreciate everything that you did to make that come to fruition. There are some families out there that are really struggling with childcare. And we know there's a huge need and we want to make sure that we do everything we can to make sure that you guys know we'll have great outcomes to bring back to you when it's done. We have to spend it within one year.
Great. And we're getting all these new jobs created here. So, I mean, we need people to be able to go to work. So, childcare is the key, I mean, the key component in that.
Yes, it is.
To get people to work.
Yep. So, again, we just want to say thank you. There is a packet in front of, in front of you that we did make copies for you. So, we just want to give you an update on the Peru Community Sharp Disposal Initiative that we've been working on. And I have some of the work, the Miami County Disease Prevention Work Group with me today. And so, we're going to talk a little bit and give you an update. So, this came to fruition back in October when we put our first kiosk out there on the end of Canal Street and East Street. So, our goal was to increase the proper disposal of syringes, decrease the sharing and the reuse of syringes, decrease the needle pricks on the street department, and then also reduce the reduction of the police department report of improper disposal. Now, the United Way had a strategic goal, and ours was to decrease the risk factors related to substance misuse, misuse by 25% by 2025. We currently have collected over, I think it was 115 pounds around in February. And I know it's full now. So, we should be close to around, around 200 pounds collected of syringes since October. So, right now, I'm going to turn it over to Antonia Sawyer. She's the CEO of Ship Happens and let her give you some more information.
Thank you, Debbie. Hello, thank you. I'm Antonia Sawyer. And many of you know me from my work here in the community. I am the founder of the Indiana-based nonprofit Ship Happens. And we've been lucky to partner with the City of Peru on our Sharps Kiosk Initiative, Prevent Pricks. And I think as we sit and talk about the sustainability of our community and the environmental health, we can't go without saying that we need to protect the health of our residents here in the community. And so, on the second page of the packet, you will see the top reported hepatitis C risk factors for 2019. And this is across the state of Indiana. And you will see that 53% of hepatitis C risk is from social contact. That is not included with the 83% of injection drug use, 85% of non-injection drug use, and then 79% for current or history of incarceration. And we do have a prison in our community. So, we do need to make sure that we are recognizing that as well. And on the third page, you will see that Miami County has been separated from the state of Indiana. And I'm sorry, I didn't realize when I printed this, it wasn't in color. So, the top line on the right-handed graph, that is Miami County. And on the bottom, that is the state of Indiana. So, we are higher for our hepatitis C rates than the rest of the state. And the reason why I focus on hepatitis is because there's not a vaccination for this. So, if our street department were to get pricked with a syringe and to contract hepatitis C, they would, they might be able to get cured, but they would still contract. So, there is no vaccination. We can't send them to the Health Department and say, you know, hey, go get your vaccination for that. And so, with that, I want to move forward with our second kiosk placement. And you will see on your fourth page that there is a property on Boulevard and Matilda. This has been recommended by the street department. So, Adam Sheets and Justin Hires have recommended that this location be the location for the second kiosk. We initially were going to speak with the mayor about this, but he had fallen ill. And so, we thought, after some chatter had hit Facebook about the first location, that we would come and ask publicly for the second. And I do want to say that when, we do get chatter about the locations of the kiosks, this working group was established in August of 2019. So, we have been working on this for nearly two years. And when we go to place a kiosk, it is very important that it abides by street rules, that it protects the kiosk user and non-kiosk user, that it's not directly in a playground or residential area where it can cause loitering, become, you know, played on. can cause loitering, become, you know, played on. We have it in a no parking zone, so that it doesn't get obstructed, and that we have increased access. And so that's why we have asked for this location as well, because again, this is very similar to East Street. It's away from a playground, it's not where a child is going to be playing, and we can easily access it from both directions. And so with that tonight, that is why we are here. Hopefully, we'll get this location. And I just want to put into perspective that 200 pounds of syringes, one syringe weighs 15 grams, so you're looking at nearly 6,000 syringes since October 30th of 2020 that have been collected in this community. And that's not with the syringe service program, so we don't have syringes going into the community at this time, this is syringes that are just here. So that just puts it into perspective a little bit about the impact that this program has had, so.
Amazing.
I know some of the chatter's been about the location of the kiosk, and some of it's been, why don't you please, like, I'm sorry, I'm Shelley, shut them in, and I've worked on the working group with them, but some of the chatter's been about the location and wanting it, like, right here in front of City Hall or places like that, but these are accessed by being able to drive up to them. So a large portion of our people that utilize these kiosks are able to just pull up and not have to walk into a CVS, a Walgreens, get out of their car, and, you know, some of them want to be private, this is healthcare, you know, we need to protect that as well. So that is some of the deciding factors on location, of being able to drive up to it. And they are ADA compliant, all the kiosks we have purchased are ADA compliant, yeah.
And we already have the second one already purchased, it's already at the street department, and it's been purchased since December.
Yeah, it's just ready to place. We're just really looking for approval to place it, to go ahead and move forward and place it, and take some of the burden off the one that we have now on East Street, give one in a location that's kind of opposite, location-wise, so that we can utilize, you know, just.
Is that up to us or is it up to the Board of Works? It's actually up to the Board of Works, okay.
Did you guys have to go to the Board of Works with the first one?
No.
Did you just work it out with the previous mayor or this mayor?
Worked it out.
Worked it out with the mayor, yeah. Well, she asked, do you think the mayor would be okay with this, and we said he wanted to ask him, but he was out ill, so we thought we'd address.
Yeah, no, I think it's so.
You're just like, hell!
We appreciate letting us know, so then, if we get questions from our constituents about it, or we see stuff on social media, and we can.
Oh, that's great.
Absolutely, thank you. And we did start it in the previous administration, I mean, we did start, yeah, with Mayor Greer on the project, and it's transitioned into, obviously, the current administration, so we really value the support of both, it's been great.
That's why you went to him.
Right, and people, people use, I mean, it's not just, I mean, I have tons of diabetic patients that use those kiosks.
We have to do it all the time, absolutely, you know, we're grateful and.
When there is something on Facebook, we try to address it immediately.
Yeah.
And there was some action on it here just recently, and we would address it immediately.
Yeah, you guys did a great job shutting it down.
Yeah, so, and then you also forgot how we got to the state and use this. Absolutely, so this program is not just in Miami County, we have actually modeled for other communities across the state, and had an opportunity to work with Stark County, who has written a grant to replicate the program. We have presented it with the Indiana Rural Health Association Lunch and Learn webinar, and we're actually participating in a community conversation at the Rural Health Conference with IU Center for Rural Engagement on May 12th. They specifically asked us if we would come and talk about the kiosk project, and in preparation for that, I have begun working with the IU Center for Rural Engagement and an intern student to create a toolkit that is full of all the links, every working group member, all the roles and responsibilities, all the steps we took for easy replication, so that we can have not just an impact in reducing hepatitis C in Miami County, but across the state of Indiana, which is, we're in a huge epidemic. We are number one in the nation for hepatitis in Indiana.
So we're going to replicate exactly everything we've done in Miami County and be able to share in the state.
Great.
That's great.
Fantastic. It has been, yeah, absolutely.
Great, wonderful.
Do you guys have any questions?
Just for the mayor, do you have, see any issues with the second kiosk?
It would be similar to the way I did on the first one. I asked them to go around and check with some of the neighbors in the area that's close proximity to see if anybody objected to it being there, and then I was going to bring it to the council, but since nobody objected to where it was placed down there, and so far, I've only had one complaint, and that's because the guy always parked there to go fish.
Absolutely.
We got it, it's all up.
But I've heard a lot more positive that's come from it.
Absolutely.
Getting there.
We went and scoped out the location, very similar to East Canal, there's a residential property about a full block away, but there is a set of four single modular homes there, so I don't know how we would address that. I don't think two of them are inhabited, but maybe the two far ones are, but I don't know how you want to address, would that hinder if those two folks said, you know, would that hinder us moving forward, or are we able to move forward, and that's just, it's two folks in the community?
Which district is that, city council, is that?
I just would hate for two people.
I don't think two negatives is going to wipe out 20 positives.
The one thing good about it, it's near a railroad track, so you know that children are not going to be there.
That's right, you're only going to be there to use it.
And there's no place to park, so nobody's going to park there, because it's not a parking spot, because it's right on the railroad track there, so when you pull up to drop off, you're going to drop off and drive away. So you're not going to see children there, because there's no way that you're going to have children there again. So that's one of the reasons I think the street department picked that particular area, so.
And I value the street department's decision, they go to the time.
That's clear.
And you're never going to please everybody.
They have cars there, and they've been running the first one, and I feel like they have got the hang of what their people love as far as sustainability of the program, so.
Sounds good, too.
Been wildly successful, so.
Great, and congratulations, thanks for doing all that for our community.
Thank you, it's great job. I'm excited to hear what you're doing with the state of Indiana.
Yeah.
How exciting.
Incredible. Very, very cool, kind of put us on the map for that, that's awesome. And Indiana Department of Health still presented with us, she, Deb Nichols, epidemiologist, generated a whole slideshow for us to present, and that's really what got the attention was IDOA jacking the project, saying this is a wonderful way to reduce people's needs, so.
It is for real.
Yeah, great.
Please keep up the good work.
Thank you. So is that, yes, we can place it, or?
I don't have any, if it was up to us, we'd be saying, yeah.
Yeah, place it.
That's absolutely, look at that.
I will personally run through the neighborhood sometime tomorrow.
Okay.
And see if anybody opposes it, and I don't see any problem with it. Since the street department has picked that location, there's someone that's out there every day, they know what traffic is, just like the police and the department, you know, exactly.
Absolutely. Well, I'll email them then and CC you on it, and then Adam can take care of it when he has time.
Great.
Awesome. Thank you guys, we appreciate it so much.
Shelley, that's all, I'm going to be contacting guys that can speak to our group, that'll be, because it's sustainability.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, thanks, Shelley.
Thank you so much.
Okay, does anybody else have anything else for communications? All right, I'll make the motion that we adjourn.
Second.